The things that they thought, the things that they took a form of government and created, and it's a framework. And one of the most important things is when you express yourself, you need people to listen. But when we get so tied into political, like the VODs, where you've got one side or another, people stop listening. All they do is talk. I think these kids here can change a generation because they're talking and they want us all to listen. And I think, you know, they talk about First Amendment rights and Second Amendment rights. They need to understand what our founders thought about when they wrote that. And I don't think a lot of people do. There's a lot of things that I miss, that I have to go back and look at. And it's, I think it's more important to really think about politics and how we form our governments. Because one of the things that distresses me the most is that if you win on one side, then that's the agenda. If you go on the other side, they win, then that's the agenda. And there's a 60-vote threshold in the Senate for a filibuster. And to get people to get their views in, they started breaking it. The whole reason for that filibuster and 60-vote thing in the Senate was so you could compromise on legislation. You could come together as a group. You may not get everything you want, but usually if you come back and compromise, you could have the best possible thing for the public. That's, I just think it's really important that we do teach politics and government, and we put it in our schools. And I think the students during this walkout displayed exactly what it's like to be responsible citizens. And we look at the registrations to vote, we don't vote that much. A lot of people don't take the time. I know there's 225 students who are going to take that time this time around. And I hope there's 800 and 2,000 and some odd kids at this school that'll register to vote when they're 18. It doesn't matter what you believe in, register and have your voices be heard.
Thank you. I'd like everyone in this room to take a look around the room. You all deserve to give yourself a round of applause. Because unlike most any other night in a board meeting, where there's only three or four of us here, you have come and lived through the actual process of a board meeting. And I applaud each of you for doing that. Because that is the purpose of tonight. And this is how you affect change, by being part of the process, okay? I have seen people in here for years who come and go, and they repeatedly check in. And then occasionally I'll see a meeting where a person shows up, asks a question about an issue, and they don't come back for three years. To the two students who stayed tonight, kudos to you. Because honestly, that is how you affect change. And while I may disagree with the idea of a protest from that standpoint, what you have done tonight is actually how it works, okay? This is how you affect change. Because I don't think enough people in this community understand what goes into this table. I watched it at the meeting. Nobody knew Robert's Rules of Order. Nobody knew how to actually ask a point of information. No one understands that Robert's Rules of Order actually govern almost 95% of all legislative action today. And if you don't understand the process, you can't work within it. So to each of you who stayed tonight through the entire meeting and heard everything, kudos to all of you. I have been doing this for years now. I'm probably one of the few people outside of a half a dozen others in this room who we don't even have to raise our hand. When we stand up, they know our name. I'm not sure if that's always so good, but we try. To all of you, I was one of the people, I believe, who might have been the only person to say, hey, I always get up here and say things and challenge you, but this vote and this decision was not even a vote. And that's the part of the process that bothers me from a public standpoint, is that there's been so much misinformation about what actually transpired, what the rules are, what standards you're held to, what laws you're even governed by as elected officials, okay? I hope Dr. Rattigan, the statement that you read will be sent to the community, okay? I would really like to see that come out in the public, on the website, let people see it. I'm also one of the few people, Mrs. Cron, thank you very much for your dedication and coming here every night and putting up with it. I've seen you here for about 10 years now personally, so I applaud you for your efforts. And I've always found you to be extremely informative. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have to turn this on?
Yeah. Thank you.
My name's Al Reiser, and I don't know if I quite had an opportunity to, I own two properties, Rock Hill and Bedminster Township. And I think, Mrs. Yarley, is it? Miss Yarley. I think your comments really kind of drill down to the essence of what it is that I was trying to convey in terms of, I think that, you know, given the students, you know, we teach, again, we teach them about Martin Luther King, we teach them about Mandela, we teach them, and yes, they did get jailed, but they shouldn't have. They shouldn't have been sanctioned for, you know, for speaking out and speaking their mind. And that, I think, is really the point. And there's going to be more of this to come, April, you know, I don't know what's, you know, what's due to happen on April 20th. There's going to be more of this to come. But I think that the students need to be given a vehicle to express themselves in a way that, what I witnessed on March 14th was phenomenal. It was absolutely phenomenal. It was the essence of what, you know, the First Amendment is really all about. And I have to take exception to the people that said this is a political discussion. It's not a political discussion. It's about safety in schools. That's what they want. That's what we want. We want safety in schools. And collectively, us as adults, we've kind of dropped the ball on that, obviously. I don't, I don't have, I don't, you know, report to have all the answers, but again, I think that you drill down to it. And, you know, my sentiment is that I just think that they need a vehicle to express themselves. And that if that has to do with walking out of school, then that's okay. This is a different issue. They're not asking to smoke weed in the cafeteria or vape in school, or whatever the case may be. Obviously, that, you know, this is entirely a different issue. And it needs to be handled with the proper amount of care. Again, I think that you kind of hit that on the head. And Mr. Kraus, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of sorry that you had to experience the things that you experienced. I think that, you know, thoughtful, intelligent discourse is what really needs to be happening all the way around. And it's too bad that you were exposed to that. And, you know, it's, it's a sad state of affairs that you were exposed to that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy McCauley, Hilltown Township. I just want to ask if it's policy, if there is a policy that states that school board members should not engage with students in any manner. I'm not saying anything about any particular thing, but I find half of this problem could have been, wouldn't be worldwide if adults in this community, a lot of adults in this community, and members of the school board did not engage with students on social media. And I think if there is another policy that states that, I really feel that there should be a policy that school board members should not engage under any circumstances, good or bad, on social media with the kids, because it just creates a really bad thing. I mean, you've been tweeted, we've been tweeted all over the world, all over the country. I have friends, I grew up in Massachusetts, calling me up and saying, what the heck weird do you live? Like, what is going on? Are you people insane? And it's pretty sad that it's come to that. I'm embarrassed. And it is true, our property values will go down if our school board members engage in something like this or are misrepresented. I don't know if they're misrepresented, because I don't know what happened at the last meeting, because there is no video, no transcript or anything, so I can't tell. All people see is what's being reported in the media, and it's pretty sad. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Honestly, I just want to make sure I went after someone short. Kathleen Plaznarski, I'm from the Upper Bucks County Technical School, so that's my district of residence. And I came out here after helping to induct 34 technical school students into our National Technical Honor Society, so it was a really uplifting event. Figure I'd stop by here real quick, see how our budget was going. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Rattigan, her administrative team, and the board for your continued support of the technical school. You actually have officially passed our budget for all three schools. So that's two out of three, and more than 14. So thank you for your continued support. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ed Mackhouse. Come to a number of school board meetings.
Oh, I'm sorry, so can you state your township again?
Yeah, I'm in Buckingham Township.
And what's your relation to Penridge?
Well, I, my son-in-law's parents live here. They moved here. And he's a veteran, flowers, he's a veteran of Vietnam War, and his son, my, his son, my son-in-law, he went to Iraq, he's in the Army Reserves. And I have a personal interest as a teacher and as a parent, and I have grandchildren from them, three grandchildren, that they kept safe. And the only way children can be kept safe is someone has to love them. And if no one loves children enough to be willing to defend them with any means necessary, then the children won't feel safe, and you have more and more people dying of drugs. So the NRA, 500,000 to 2 million people a year report that they successfully defend themselves and their children with firearms. So the loving parents are the most, 50% of the American people believe in defending their children. And it's a political thing that's going on here. People are fighting against this country. They don't believe in standing up, kneeling down at the American flag and all. And my experience as a teacher, I know that it's, children won't respect you like in Parkland if you're not willing to stand up and protect them. The children, 35 times, they asked for help, and they didn't get it. They're always telling you, report things. But if the school board, like in Parkland and their police department, stands outside and doesn't let armed teachers who love their children enough to go in and disarm these teachers who care, have a legal right in Pennsylvania and in Florida to carry guns, but they have to stand aside in the blood of their children, their students that they love, and die with them, it's not necessary. In schools with NRA people, Jews for the Protection of Firearms, where teachers, administrators defend them, there isn't any of these tragedies. These tragedies are caused by people who think that you can legislate, pass laws to solve all the problems of the world. There's, laws have to be enforced. There's plenty of laws that says you're not allowed to put a gun at a girl's head to make her put out. And then, but they excuse them. They, five years, this pervert at Parkland was pushed through the system. So they say they want to spend more money on that? There's some people, psychologists know, if a person doesn't want to be helped, you can't really help them unless you get control of them, commit them to an institution, or do something that, you can't fool the students.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You've got to tell them the truth.
I think of a couple of board members, I touched on a couple of key points that I can relate to. And that is, to have a proper, well-rounded, educated discussion, there must be terms to an argument. There must be limits to when and what you can talk about, or else we just conflate a bunch of different things, and we look right past each other. I think that what happened with the school board meeting that day, or with, like, this whole event, was a big set of miscommunication. From my group supporting police brutality, sorry, anti-police, to equating us at times to KKK and anti-Jewish, I think that's a whole large set of miscommunication. And I think it's unnecessary, and it was counterproductive to what we were trying to do. I think another board member, not board member, someone raised shielding from reality to not have students, to have students protected from politics in a school environment. And that's not, that's not the real world. You're shielding this person from the reality, and the reality is he's or she is going to grow up, and they're going to be exposed to different ideologies that they have to learn to accept and understand or even empathize with. And that's what we need to be teaching. I think there's a common misconception that if you allow something to happen, something else will happen. And that's a fallacy. That's called slippery slope. And in slippery slope, a lot of people think, oh, if I open this door, then this other door is going to happen. I think as a, as a school board, as a community, we can be educated enough to know that if someone is going to protest a teenager getting an assault rifle and shooting up his kids, his fellow students in school, that that's wrong. But if someone were to go to promote hate speech, such as the KKK and other groups, which was raised by the board several times, I didn't get to address, I'm addressing it now, I think we can agree as a society that that is wrong, and that we could use our common judgment for that. And I think, I think, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Andrea T. Moore, Hilltown Township. I think that if children are able to protest and walk out about gun control, something as serious as gun control, then they should be able to have discussions on social media. If the school were to decide that the board should not engage with students on social media, I would support that decision. But I would also ask them that the board decides that teachers cannot engage on social media. Because I have had my middle schooler see one of her teachers in a pussy hat, excuse the language, but that's what they're called, on Instagram. And then I had to explain that. So if we're going to do it for the school board, I would just say, please, also do it for the teachers. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabe Reiser. I'm from Sellersville, and I'm a freshman at this school. And I've been going here my whole life, this district, my whole life. And I've never really seen much wrong with this district. It's a great district. But I do believe that the decision to not let the kids walk out was the wrong one, because, because since, since I was born, I was taught to express myself from my, not only my parents and my family, but from my teachers and my principals. And I think that this walkout was one of the best ways we could express our opinions on the issue of school safety. And like many other students who go to this school, I don't want to be scared anymore. And I think this protest was to try to bring light to that. And I truly believe that if, instead of Parkland, it was our school that, or a school closer to us, that you, I hoped that you would have let us do the walkout and let us express that we feel pain for all these events and all these people that we've lost to this horrible reoccurring event. That's all I got.
I think the issue here is people are getting confused between what we're talking about. Are we talking about the walkout and why it's important, which I understand the students are quite passionate about? Or are we talking about what is a school board's responsibility to protect their students and to sit, and to set precedent and to set rules? We need to stop talking about what, at this point, if that's what we're talking about, is the rule and what, how we're going to handle it, not talk about the subject, because it's very emotional. But so is somebody else's subject. I think the school board made the decision based on the rule, not on the emotion. And I think this is where people are getting confused. If the students want to protest, they can protest in the morning, to see you at the poll rallies in the morning before school. There's nobody infringing on the student's ability to have freedom of speech. It also works after school, guys. It's not just during the school district time. So the school board has a responsibility to protect students and to enforce rules, and that's what you did. And that's what you're supposed to do. That's what we hired you to do. You're the adults, they're the kids. That's why we set boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you again, Larry Cullen from Hilltown Township. And so I just want to make a few comments here. I guess with keeping politics out of school, of course, doesn't mean not having political debates in the school. But, you know, that should be taught in school. Kids should, should debate politics amongst themselves. That's certainly not what we're talking about, at least not what my concern is here. My concern is more is, the purpose of the walkout at the school was to associate the school with the cause, the political cause, which the kids were supporting. The school should not, as an institution, in my view, be associated with any political cause. That should be, the school should be agnostic to all political causes, so all children of whatever political cause or background they are, they feel comfortable at the school, they feel safe in a learning environment, and they basically can debate amongst themselves, but they should not feel uncomfortable showing up for school worrying about they're going to be in a debate that they do not want to be part of. The other, the other thing I want to point out is that, this is not really, in my view, a freedom of speech issue. Freedom of speech, of course, they can speak anywhere, they can speak amongst themselves at school. But this is, is really a freedom of association issue. These kids, and I have great respect for their children, and I actually, I have nothing, I have no, nothing against what they did or their actions, and they felt strongly in an issue that they took, and they, they felt strong enough to take the action, knowing the discipline that they were received. I respect them for their decision, and I respect that they are willing to take the discipline. And from my daughter in school here, I haven't heard any students that were upset with the disciplinary procedures that they elected to chose. And in my own personal view, it would be almost disrespectful to the children now to say, of their decision, to say that they shouldn't take the discipline that they wanted to take for their action. And I think we all can agree, for better or worse, I mean, Penridge and the protests here has gotten magnitudes more attention than almost any other school any of us can think of. So you can thank the administration, perhaps, for that. They made the protests of the children much more effective than any other child in any other school, pretty much anywhere. And that's because everybody followed the rules. And so when the rules are set and they're filed and the expectation they're in, then the children achieve what they want, the school district has followed the rules that they want. And they also are not forcing other kids to associate with causes that they may not want to associate with. So this is more of a freedom of association, in my view, and whether or not we compel other kids that do not want to be part of this cause to be forced to associate with it. And to my view, that should not occur in a school. A school should be a place where all kids, of all political backgrounds or beliefs, can go. They can debate if they want to, or they cannot debate if they want to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Super on West Rock Hill Township. The students said that they want safety. I would be very upset to, I'm upset, I mean, as a parent, you know, to have that many people killed on school grounds, it's an upsetting topic. And, but, we have a policy in this district that you can't just walk out of the school with no permission from your parents and leave school in the middle of the day. It's a safety issue. So I find it ironic that 225 students say they're concerned about safety, and they create an unsafe environment for the rest of the student body. They come back in signing false names like Sleepy Dopey, you know, the Seven Dwarf names. Well, as an administrator, who let them do that? And second of all, is that a student coming back in? Or is that an outsider that didn't have a name and sneaked back in? That was an unsafe situation. So if you're concerned about safety, then don't create unsafe situations by walking out of the school with no parental permission in the middle of the day. They want to tell me it's not political, but they insisted that it have to be at the same day, same hour, same minute, as a political organization that's anti-gun, anti-this, that, and the other. If it wasn't political, they could have had their walkout any time. Another thing is, and I looked this up with the ACLU, so I'm not out of step here. This school is paid for by taxpayers of all different opinions, not just the opinions of the 225 kids that disobeyed the rules. And some people are anti-gun, some people are pro-gun, some people are anti-police, some people love their police. These 225 kids took everybody's taxpayer money, regardless of their political point of view, whether they were in agreement with the 225 or not, and used that facility that was paid for by people who probably disagree with them. Taxpayers that paid to bus them here, pay their teachers. This is an education facility. This is not a political headquarters. So when you start using taxpayers' money who have different beliefs from you, you are siphoning off funds that were not meant for your political view. It was meant to educate you. And the teachers are standing around, the administrators are standing around, we got extra security standing around, because you're misusing a facility for your political activities instead of educating yourself. And one more thing, I find it really interesting that these kids are all for freedom of speech, but if you don't happen to agree with them, you're biased. You don't have...
Mrs. Furlong, your time's up. Thank you. Mrs. Furlong, thank you.
I am not hindering.
Sorry, we need to...
It's private property by a private citizen, and I do not agree with...
Mrs. Furlong, I ask you to stop, please.
Yes, ma'am. My property.
Is there any other public comment?
I have a comment.
Is there any other public comment?
Sure, can I speak here?
Well, you get to speak one time.
Person.
Yeah, once, yeah. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I don't have much to say, other than I've known what's been going on, and I've heard everyone talk tonight. There's a lot of anger on both sides, and I think it's just going to be rehashed over and over. It sounds like there's another talk of another event. And I just think it's a lot of time wasted, that we've got a lot of passion on both sides, if we could just come together and use that passion to look at what we can do within our district. I don't have kids in the high school, and it seems like all the focus is on the high school right now, whereas there's all these middle schools and elementary schools, and I feel like it's just wasted time. There's things that we could be doing to safeguard our schools, look at different, you know, things that aren't safe now, or come together and listen to suggestions. I think there'll probably be a lot of yelling on both sides about who's right and who's wrong, about whether we, you know, aren't teachers, don't aren't teachers. Clear backpacks, not clear backpacks. I think you just take any kind of issue and it's going to be an argument. But I'd rather that all the passion go and stay locally, rather than hashing it out back and forth about what could have been with this march or what should have been with the march, because, you know, I'm all about, you know, not just letting things go, but at some point you have to move on and try to solve, like, what's really, what was the main issue to start with? And that was school safety and what we can do at Penridge.
Thank you. All right, last call for public comment.
If Ms. Cullen is going to make a statement, I'd like to reserve time for the rebuttal.
I don't, that's not how the, the board operates, I'm sorry. If you, if anyone wants to make a comment at our next meeting or write an email, you're welcome to do that. But once I close public comment, that will be the end of that. All right, so I do not see any other, I don't see anybody else. Are there any, I'll take comments from the press and then, and then if the board wants to say anything else. So, is there any press here? Any questions from the press? All right, so, I don't see any, except Mrs. Cullen.
Hey, I just wanted to point out, there was, people have been saying that something needs to be done, and I'm not sure if everyone is aware, that on March 14th, there was a bill passed in the House with a vote of 407 to 10. It was the School Safety Act. It attempts to curb school violence by providing more training for school officials and local law enforcement to respond to mental health crises, as well as, among other things, money to develop anonymous reporting systems for threats and deterrent measures like metal detectors and locks. And to the point about, that has been made a couple of times tonight, that I think now it needs to be clarified, I don't think anyone on the board was associating or likening students to the KKK. And since it was said twice, I want to clarify. I also want to clarify that when, you know, in Dr. Radigan's remarks, when she was saying that board members came with political points of view, I and other people were contacted by members of the community. And it's my responsibility, when members of the community contact me, I pass on those concerns to the relevant people, or I say to people, "Send your comment in to the board and/or to the school." And I do also agree that adults shouldn't have gotten involved, and I wanted to point out, Mrs. McCauley has left. But I didn't, I never contacted children. I had my information, false information about, you know, myself and someone else being responsible for personally putting the kibosh on a plan that we never saw presented. It was a member of this community who launched that false attack against me on social media, and I responded to him, an adult. On that adult's account, other people who are not adults came to it and made comment. So I think it's fair to point that out, that I was not going out and seeking contact with, with children. That's not what I was doing. And the person who made that false attack oddly is not here tonight. So, I just wanted to put that out on the record. I think it's unfair, I think it's unfortunate that an adult created this whole kerfuffle, and now here we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make, address some of the points that were brought up. There was a question about the age of the steering committee. I don't have an answer to that, but I would say to, when the information comes out, to put in your name, and then we can find out the answer to that. The comprehensive plan survey. Yeah? Do you know?
Well, I don't, the survey, that's fine for them to respond, but even for the comprehensive plan, districts do not have to have students on the comprehensive plan steering committee, but Penridge has it, it passed, and we are going to have two students on again.
Oh.
So anybody who's interested should speak to the student council leaders.
Okay, so is it the, it's going, it's going through student council? They need to, like, talk to the student council officers, or the-
They could even talk to their administrator, too. We can just, we need two students, would like to have two students on the committee.
Okay. All right. Somebody had asked a question about policy, and I, I would direct everyone who wants to find out about board policy to go to the website. If you want to the school board, there's board docs, and there's a link to the, there's a tab for the policies, and you can search, you can put in words, they're also broken down. So I would direct anyone there who has a question about policy. There was a question about, somebody made a statement about the school board, and that's what we hired you to do. I know most people know, we are volunteers, so I just wanted to clarify, we are not hired. We don't make any money for being up here. It's an elected position with zero salary, so.
And no benefits.
Yes, and no benefits.
Mileage, nothing.
A yearbook. I also just want to say, there was a comment about miscommunication, and, and also, I mean, I just, and I know, Gabe Reiser spoke, and then he left right away, and, you know, it makes me very, very saddened to hear a student say that, you know, "I don't want to be scared anymore." So that really just breaks my heart, and I, and I think that goes back to the issue. And then talking about miscommunication, I, you know, I think that, that was part of the issue, I said it earlier, as far as people not agreeing even on the terms of the argument. You know, I believe people were talking past each other, and I think we all need to do a better job of listening. I, I will say for myself, when I came to that meeting, the activities meeting, you know, I thought we were just discussing the student remembrance, and I was concerned that that was not going to get approval. So, that was my main focus, and I was, I guess, you know, surprised when students were talking about walking out, and then, and it wasn't quite clear to me in the beginning, it took a while after, you know, I think in the comments after the meeting, it became more clear. I don't think it was entirely clear what students were planning on doing and what they wanted to do. You know, my hope, and where I, you know, I personally think that, you know, we missed the mark, is that we, you know, didn't provide a forum for all the voices. And I think that it is possible to do that, and it doesn't just have to be one side. And as I said, it doesn't, you know, have to be black and white. And I, you know, I think that, you know, to serve our students and have them feel supported on this issue, and if the students are talking about school safety, and if they're talking about being afraid in school, that, you know, they need to have a place to have their voice heard. I think that's everything. Anybody have anything else? All right, so, we are adjourned. Thank you.